Okay, I will call this meeting of the Durham Board of Selectments of Order on April 26th, 2022. Please stand for the point of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So we have one more member who is excused of absence tonight. It'll be the business travel. So that would be Josh Collin-Golden. The other four members are present. Any amendments to the agenda? We have one, I know we have one, one of the consent agenda, actually two. On the consent agenda, 8D will be the signing, the annual signing of the oaths. At least part, part for CIP Committee, Town Board, Memorial Day Parade Committee, Scholarship Committee, the Deputy Fire Chief, and the interim town manager. So this is wave two. We did wave one last time. Hope there'll be a third wave. And then 8E is also the annual signing of the warrant for the school budget articles. That will be posted for the three-town school budget meeting, which is on May 25th, I believe, at Freeport High School. So it's just like a town meeting, except it's three towns combined, and so they have the warrant and articles. And the municipal officers from all three towns need to sign the warrant, just like we do for our own town meeting. And so we need to do that today. Anything else? Any other amendments to the agenda?
I may add something in my report to you, just the consideration, we don't have decisions tonight.
Okay. Alright, we can move forward then. Next on the agenda is reports, and the fire chief is...
We'll set the pace and we'll do it quick.
Alright.
So three, three quick updates and a question. So Anheuser-Busch came through with a grant for drinking water. I'm told probably two pallets, each one's 96 cases of drinking water. It's for rehab, pre-hab, bloodway, and firefighting, that type of stuff. But it goes all year. We stock the trucks. It also will go back since we are a heating and cooling facility at the fire station and a reunification for the school. So drinking water on the end is always a problem.
Yeah.
So that was nice to clarify this. And again, that, that whole grant cycle is always ongoing. That just happens to be one we got yesterday. Thursday's schedule, if you drive by or stop by, we have hose testing all day long. Every foot of hose, I think there's over 12,000 feet, so two and a half miles. If you want to help pick up, let me know. We also have visitors. A retired fire chief's daughter is bringing her challenged class. These are mentally challenged kids, so they're on a special day at the firehouse. Sort of public education, always nice, nice to see them. And then Thursday night, you might have seen the trailer, the state provides us with free training props. So we have a forcible injury prop. So we've invited Powell, a few other people down where it's a big steel door and they can have at it different techniques of breaching a door with wooden stoppers for realism. So that's always nice. This upcoming Saturday is the fire department banquet. From 5:00 to 10:00, it's in Freeport. We do have other fire departments covering, just in case. We do have a per diem on duty. It hasn't been, I think, a couple of years, but it's our annual banquet. That's it for updates. Quick question. Let's come to a question. So I've been evaluating the different components of the fire department, and that includes apparatus, training, funding, fees, and now most importantly, the building itself. It is a town-owned asset. It is very important. And it's an aging facility. I've been sort of telling that before. 1980 is when they doubled the size, so 40 years ago, last edition was exactly 20 years ago in July. And we're coming upon some expenses. So I'm starting to reach out about maybe a list for us for spending some of the ARPA funds. In my research, for the ARPA funds, and it was not a deep dive, but my research was just, you know, the non-reoccurring, reoccurring expenditures that can be targeted for important, you know, long-term assets. I don't think the fire department is a long-term asset. They talked about unique opportunities for state and local to make strategic investments in long-lived assets. Currently, I've identified the heating and cooling. You know, last year we did upgrade the heating system. That totally failed. We're looking for heating, heat pumps with cooling. A request for a proposal just came in. I have had a discussion with the town manager. That was under 12,000, but that doesn't include the, the electrical component of that to upgrade. That's another three. So that's 15,000. We can sort of, I've taken upon myself, to bundle or to look at assisting this facility with their heating issues. If it came down to the same, same request for proposal. Also, just yesterday, our side doors kind of failed. We have a locked facility due to pharmacological drugs in our assets. We do have a unit cane that, that does help who comes and goes via computer. But that, the seal is failing. You can see under it's warped steel. That's coming anywhere from two to four thousand.
Is that why the water issue was? Off of the other side of the building?
No, but there is a water issue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Things just to be mindful about, I will be looking for cost revenues and ideas if we can. I have looked at grants. It's very difficult to find infrastructure grants other than the ARPA that we have. Again, talking with Mitch, if I can be on a committee or assist, or if we can move some things up to the forefront in a timely fashion, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Heat pumps, are you talking about cooling the bowl?
Thank you. No, just the office side. So we do have three or four gas fed, sort of air furnace for the bays, and those seem to work fine. Just that training facility with the three. And again, we have stock, important stock that's climate control, record keeping, medical things that do need a climate control. Heat's working okay, but there is no cooling in the building. And again, doing the dive of the evaluation, you know, of the school and the reunification and the heating and cooling facility for the town, you know, on those hundreds of days that people need to stop by, that type of stuff, doesn't happen often, but we do need to provide it. Yes.
On the electrical side, you said it was $3,000. Is that because you're the panel, you're out of room?
Yes. So that was an upgrade of like a 200 amp service specifically.
Adding another pound.
Correct. There's a panel area, he has come to look at it. That wasn't, that was the exact to add for those heat pumps itself. Add one panel with the drop that's there. I think it was a 200, if I recall.
Sure.
Just, just for that. An increase. And that doesn't include, I've had that same request for proposal, local electrician that we've used in the past. Look at changing everything over to LED lights for the entire, that's on the outside and the inside. I think he counted like 48 overhead, you know, lights, that type of stuff. There is a rebate. That's different subject matter, but that's what we're doing. So requests for proposals, sort of shovel-ready projects for when you are, if you do not. Any other questions or?
No, I think I want to take advantage of the opportunity, because Chief and I talked about this a little bit earlier this week about ARPA money. And so I did some research on this and I've read through the Maine Municipal Association legal guidance. And for a town that has a town meeting in form of government, the procedure for spending ARPA money is going to require a town meeting. Because we have to do a spending article with something like, "To see if the town will spend X dollars on HVAC for the fire department utilizing ARPA funds." You know, something like that. So we're, we're gonna have to talk, not necessarily tonight, given the weeks, but at some point, it might be a workshop type thing where we're gonna have to talk through kind of the ARPA process and how we want to approach it. You know, we're definitely, you know, we want to make sure we have an opportunity for public input probably fairly soon, because I, I would envision that we're not gonna want to wait till next April before we... Right? Especially since it's the TAs and the town office, sort of a open workshop, community, public hearing type of thing where it's an opportunity, you know, an opportunity for the public to present ideas they might have about how ARPA funds would be spent. I would anticipate, I was talking with Mitch, I would anticipate building some sort of a presentation, probably like a PowerPoint that explains to people what ARPA is, what you can spend it on, what you can't spend it on, you know, the process, the procedure for spending it, you know, timelines, things like that, to help educate people. And then a list of things we're already considering, so people could comment on that, plus they could offer their own ideas. So we're probably gonna need to do that. I mean, you know, within, fairly shortly after a new town manager is hired, you know, assuming we do that according to our current schedule. If we don't, then we might have to do it before we actually hire a new town manager. So I wanted to take the opportunity to kind of, because everybody said, well, we can use ARPA funds for that, and ARPA funds for us. And a lot of things we can, but it's going to require town meeting, ghost, do it.
I would support the chair's timeframe, subject matters. Time is of the essence because of the supply chain issues. But the chief has indicated by combining our HVAC system requirements, we probably already have a good opportunity to get a vendor that doesn't have the serious supply chain issue.
So the main reason I want to mention it tonight, and we should probably put something soon in one of the newsletters, is to give people a heads up to pay attention, because there's likely, almost certainly going to be a special town meeting, at least one, if not more than one, between now and April. So...
Probably a good chance to look at season.
Yeah, so that's what we gotta talk, we need to... And the thing is, we don't, we don't have to decide all at once. You know, like we've got two projects, like the HVAC, you know, and we've got a total pool of somewhere around $400,000, and that's 70,000. And we just go, go to the town for a pool of 70,000. And then we, you know, we keep prioritizing and keep working through the other funds. Because we have, you know, three or four years to actually work through.
2026 is the audit requirement for file reporting, I think?
Uh, yeah, I thought it was eight, but yeah, but it's, it's, we have some time. It's not this year. So I think you're asked, I think you read it this 2026. Anyway, so that was something. So thank you for putting a bug in our ear on that and getting that going.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for the chief?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so Mitch passed me, you know, I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit here. So reminder of the process we're going through to select the committee to do the first round interviews for the new town manager. We have three community members, three staff members, and three board members. And we are in the process, we've scheduled most, and there's one or two left to schedule interviews for people on the committee. But we have two of the staff members, they're here tonight, and Mitch is asking if we can do their interviews now in, rather than we have them wait till the end of the meeting. But that means we'd have to go into executive session to do it. And then, and everybody would have to leave, and then we can come back in after the executive session. Probably would take me up, there's two, right?
Two fine women in the hallway.
We're talking, you know, we, we've talked about doing five to 10-minute, you know, brief conversations. And so taking 20, 20 minutes or so to do that. So thoughts on that? I see we're gonna possibly even add some Thursday. Yeah, so most of it, we tried to get, we tried to get as many as possible on Thursday night to do it all on shot. But we did put it out there, if there was somebody who wasn't available Thursday night, we could do it tonight, and we have just the two, Jessica.
10 total?
I don't know how many total we have.
We actually have 11 people. Two tonight would leave you nine.
For Thursday?
For Thursday. And you actually have 15 minutes at the start of your meeting at 6:30. At 6:45, every 15-minute slot, you go straight through.
Yeah. Do we have more than two town employees at this point?
Yes. Calvin is the third applicant from the town. He's at 6:45.
Oh, we don't have more than three?
Do we have more than three?
No.
And that's the deadline I met?
Yes. Not everyone.
By default? Let's, come on in here, ladies. Let me ask you guys. So there's, there's three, three staff spots on the committee.
Yep.
There's only three staff applications.
Yep.
Is there something you want to talk to the board about, about being on the committee? Or the fact that we, which we're happy to provide that, if there's something you wanted to say about it in executive session to us about the committee? Or if you're good, then we don't, if there's only, we know you, there's, there's only three of you that have applied. So to Rich's point, so it's up to you. If you're good without the interview, then we're good.
Hey, if you're good without the interview, we're good.
Alright, congratulations.
There's one other thing. You have to be fitted to the leg irons out there.
Well, that's easy. Let's go.
Thank you. And we gave them the option if they wanted to say something?
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll get back to the regular course of action here. Calvin's not here tonight, so this is a real official report, correct? Or are you entering that for him?
I'm kind of entering that in my manager's report.
Okay, then we'll go to the manager's report.
I'm gonna email my public comment, because there's a real big discussion happening at my board, and I feel like I can't miss that. So I'm gonna email public comment, okay? Sorry to interrupt. 8 o'clock. First tonight. See you then. Thank you.
Can you drop off a physical application?
Yes.
Because I can't reduce the one that you sent.
Got it. Thanks.
We're not as rigid as...
Fudge, you can make says that too much.
I know. I sent them all chocolates and stuff.
Got several items I want to keep you informed about. Under departments, the town board continues to complete various items, including customer service at the counter. She also keeps in contact with our IT team, who are working on several items, including daily updates to our website and review of the speed for both upload and download. We are concerned that the lack of speed is impacting the timeliness and effectiveness of our website. We will report results to the select board in the near future. The deputy treasurer had been busy with both the auditors, as well as preparing to establish the FY22 approved budget in Trio. She will be busy with most of these during the week. We are preparing for the transition to a regular code enforcement officer, who is expected to be on board full-time on May 16. His name is Allen Plummer. He's experienced, and he's coming to us from the town of Mechanic Falls.
Excellent.
He will work in concert with our town planner. I would like to thank Calvin Bumier for stepping in and handling the code enforcement issues over the last several months. He has responded to many questions, as well as dealt with the enforcement that's needed. He is also looking forward to providing the transition on a non-dual basis. Now that we've talked about the code officer, I'm going to interject a verbal amendment. We have been scratching our heads over the last month as to space. And as you all know, space is a consistent problem. And now that we're going to have pretty much a full-time code enforcement officer, where's that person gonna go? It can only squeeze so many people in that back room. And then when we start having more files, it gets a little tough. Let's leave the women's room alone. Let's look at something that's logical, doesn't have a whole lot of bricks and mortar to it, effectively is the least expensive, and it allows maximum flexibility for the future despite all of the planning that you have for the next town hall expansion or whatever. And that would be to run a rigid conduit connection between the office in the back here where our IT is, all the way to the Eureka Hall. And we would run a double line, so if there's redundancy, if one should fail, we can easily switch over. Calvin's people will be doing the excavation and the backfill. And we're, we're doing now the exploration of costs, so that you have a clear understanding of what that is. The concept would be that this office then becomes the office from that door bucket to here. We're gonna have portable dividers. And we've talked a little bit further, and putting a mapping board and map systems against that wall. People who come in looking to do their own research on map lots and everything, they'd be right in there. Doesn't interfere with what's happening here, and it's all portable. As far as the partitions, the desk and our file folders or folding file drawers. The chief did some exploration work with state surplus. I think we have found a logical solution to that equipment at a very minimal price other than time and gas. Gotta go get it.
Gotta go get it?
Gotta go get it. So I want you to consider that, and that immediately frees up a whole lot more and gives you a larger meeting room for the public. There will be some requirements that are having to be met in order to occupy that on a, on a basis that we're talking about. I say a fireproof steel jacket door is an exit on the first floor. Making sure that no one can get to the second floor. And the fire chief has a punch list of the things that he feels are necessary. I'm not saying they're minor, but they're not major either. And we're not talking about bringing anyone up to the second floor for any reason. The killer there is your second floor form of egress, a second form of egress. And until you have that at one, the other end of the building, which is the front left side of the building, depending on where you're standing, the right side if you're outside. And that would have to be something of a fireproof nature, so people can get in and out, plus the ADA access on the backside.
Why does, why does having our meetings over there change the requirements in that building at all? I mean, there's already meetings. There's a meeting over there right now. I mean, there's already stuff happening.
I think the door was already a part of the requirements, even before the voting and the meeting, but we should have done that.
I mean, if there's something about it that's not meeting, hasn't been used now, not meeting from a fire code, that's, then we should look at that. But I don't think us moving our meetings over there is gonna change anything about code requirements. It's just, it's just another meeting.
We're not sure it needs to be fireproofed. Maybe it needs to be outside, it's gonna crush, but...
Well, we don't know. We'll need a report to come to us.
Exactly.
We can, you know, we, we're not as much good to speculate on.
But the bigger issue is how we're gonna get more space at this, this building and utilize it to its maximum.
So what's the hard wire for? What is your running on the front?
It would be the connectivity rather than to a Wi-Fi.
Yeah, data cable.
I think it's more, I think it's been recommended up to this point, and we're still waiting for BEK, our IT people, to give us a recommendation.
I'm just trying to figure out why you, you want to put it over there, upload to the cloud, and that would be cheaper than a hard wire.
If they allow, if we have the upload and download speed capabilities, and it works through the Wi-Fi system and the router system, and BEK says it's not gonna have any interference, that's fine. But right now, we're doing a test. That camera that is recording video is using our bandwidth, as I understand it.
Yeah.
And that may degrade through the Wi-Fi getting to the other end.
Sure. Comcast would need to be consulted for this as well, right? Because we need to find out, like, I'm not sure we can, there's probably gonna be an additional fee for Comcast for another location of, you know, internet service.
We'd have to clarify all that.
Yeah, just slicing two buildings is essentially what we're doing.
That's all it is.
Illegal, typically, but even if, like, if I own that house, I own that house, I can't slice off that house to go to that house. But I would think we would just put service in that building.
Right, yeah, that's what I think.
That might, that might be, we should look at that too. We may not need the conduit. But I, but I think part of it was the AV, all the AV equipment would still be in here.
Right.
And the, and the connection for the AV equipment and the monitoring, all that stuff.
Might be a problem.
So, but I think, you know, and I think you're in the process of doing it, there's more homework to be done on what the technical challenges are.
If you had said no tonight, then we'd stop all of that.
Oh, no, no, no. This is a great idea. It just doesn't matter how, like, just logistics. Just logistics on it is...
Is there, is there anybody opposed to the concept of us having our meetings over there sometime in maybe near future versus here?
I'm not opposed to that. I mean, my, my only thing is spending money on getting technology probably from, I don't know, looks like the AV room of my junior high school over to a building, where I would think, if you do have funds available potentially, that we would be upgrading that facility to handle this rather than trying to piggyback off of this building. That's my own concern.
I mean, we need to look at the different options. And again, like our conversation the other day, don't give them the solution, give them the problem, right? And like, and have the experts help us with options.
What we're trying to do is not move walls and leave the building in its best location and take full advantage of not having a reoccurring monthly expense if there's any costs associated with that.
And if you did something, at least make the building blocks for a technology upgrade later.
Well, I would think so. I, I, you know, I just don't, I don't, I don't know how the town will be able to alleviate a monthly cost. And I don't know if that's really something we should be thinking about alleviating. I think we need to have the service, you know, to be as good as it possibly can and not necessarily a secondary service off of this particular service. I know it's a lot of services, but you see what I'm saying going for that. It's just, we are due for an upgrade in technology that this is the bottom line.
Both hardware and software.
Both hardware and software.
So I think, you know, I think, you know, some sort of requirements document for BEK and Comcast that just lists out, you know, what you want to be able to do. Like, we want to, we want to have our, we want to have meetings over there. We want to be able to broadcast and record. We need, you know, we need internet access. We're not, we're not looking to like move walls and do building additions and things of that sort. You know, just, and then with those requirements, see what they come back for, come back with for solutions.
Does the fire department have an helper in that, with access? Anything?
That's a separate, you have a separate service.
A small one, and honestly, we're working on sort of laptops.
Laptops and Wi, you got Wi-Fi and just, just.
You got just in the office side of things.
I would, you know, just free for thought, not, I don't have dog and fight as hard as wish. But you might want to start with Comcast, and sometimes they can recommend a solution prior to the consulting fees at BEK. That's the only way. I don't think we're gonna be the one inventing this, but I think it's probably invented.
It is effective.
But I think, I think we're definitely here and we're on board with the concept of of moving over there so that the space can be used in another way.
That's what we wanted, we'd like to be able to explore further.
Yep. If, if they do pull the pole, so to speak, without the Wi-Fi or the trench, it would be considered for the fire department also, depending on your funding, revenues, or ideas, because, talking to Mitch, we need upgrading also. It'd be almost a town, you know, our side is the pole. We have a drop fee from that.
Yeah, and I wonder if the case with the fire department is just a matter of, you just need a higher tier of service. And then like, is the hardware already there, you know?
Yeah, and I think that's why I started off with like a business, I don't know what they have as far as business, but you know, in the business world, we, there's a Comcast, number you can follow. It's a business itself. They come up and kind of give you the lay of the land of what their recommendation was, how many gigawatt service, et cetera, blah, 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 blah.
Comcast business.
Exactly. They, they do that.
Super. Great. Back on point, Calvin will be making special reports to the select board at your May meeting. Not May 26th, but your May meeting regarding the impacts and costs of energy as originally developed as part of the FY2022 budget process. As an example, right now, the rat price is twice the cost of what it was last summer. Twice the cost. And that is diesel fuel, gasoline. And as such, we use 15,000 gallons of diesel alone. And if you double that cost, we're already in the hole just on that one area. We haven't even touched the other forms of energy. And we want to be a little bit more specific, so the public understands we're facing on their behalf some of the same escalations. And there's not much you can do.
Is he budgeted an LY cost?
He was paying...
Because you said the difference between cost is double than LY, but what, what was budgeted?
What was budgeted, but, but I've told you just a moment ago, it's double. What he was paying per gallon under contract... he was paying per gallon under contract for the delivery of diesel oil a year ago, and that contract has ended, is actually more than doubled right now at the rack price.
Right, understood, but what, what, what did he build into the 2022 budget?
I've got to figure that out.
Okay, okay.
You know, I'm sure there was some small escalation, but not.
Not double.
Hundred percent. And, and that's the biggest issue that everyone is facing. And we want to have a more detailed understanding of gallons or kilowatts and what it is that we could be.
So I think what would be, what will, once he, once he kind of figures that out and comes up with an estimated, you know, total impact for the year, maybe like if things don't change, I think questions to him would be, how much of that does he think he can absorb in his, somehow in his current budget? And if, if he doesn't feel he can absorb it all, is he literally going to need more money? In which case, we need to go, that would be another article question on a special town meeting warrant. We can't, we can't raise additional monies because you can only assess taxes once. But we, it would have to come from undesigned.
It would have to be, it would have to be a preparation approval.
Right, so if we ran into that.
Does that, does he supply fuel to the fire department as well?
No.
Separate contract.
So we're in the same.
I would say.
Same issue with that?
Less road mileage. So we'll, we'll probably absorb it, and then we've been doing policies of, you know, training is sort of in-house, not traveling. We have been watching it, but just adjusting on road mileage. Just since yesterday, when we started talking to the so-called bidder supplier, from yesterday to today, rack price went up 25 cents. And we are, if you're a global watcher of politics, you can understand where some of that is coming from.
Once we go into a recession later in the year, it's going to crash.
Uh, yeah.
Or election.
Right. So we just, you know, we're putting everyone on notice that, like business, we're being.
Yep.
Mitch, just my only follow-up question to that, does Calvin know how much he has, for lack of better words, in reserve of gas he has not used and when he will be approaching on having to pay the higher rack or lower rack price?
That's right. We talked about that, we can go another few weeks of what's in the two tanks that he's using right now. But after that, you're then filling up. They don't expect the price to drop much before June, July period, and even then, they're banking on a dollar drop. So anyway, we do it, minus what he built into it, is the net increase of expenditure that we may have to deal with, or hope for a warm winter and not have to put out a lot of salt. And I'm not a gambler.
Yeah.
Told you guys about those EV plow trucks, they're nice.
Yeah.
To make those, right?
Continuing the law ordinance, town manager hiring process. As of April 23rd, all of the advertisements soliciting applicants for both the combined citizen and select board application review committee, and encouraging qualified individuals to submit their resumes and applications to be considered for the position of town manager had been placed. As I've indicated to your chair, we are recipients of two formal applications already. Our website was the first placement with a full explanation of the submittals needed, followed by the newspapers in Portland, Lewis, DeNord and Bangor, as well as three northern state municipal association applications and websites. I would expect that the initial reviews, if things go well, will get underway by the second week of May. The market for the town manager code enforcement officers has become extremely competitive in the relevant states. And I say that with all sincerity because it is having an impact like everything else. And I've talked to you about the border, the office space, so I'm not going to go ahead and repeat myself respectfully, so that.
The county meeting was the, the ordinance change where it's, it's now up to us to approve our fee schedule for permits, all the land use stuff. So we need to go through, we need to do the benchmarking of communities and kind of see where others are. And actually, Heather Roy's actually done some work here that might not be able to leverage. And we're at least using a starting point or a data point. Because the idea is, okay, for the things that we have, that we charge fees for, various permits and developer fees and so on, you know, what do comparable towns charging, and we would adjust our fees accordingly. So it's just something that we shouldn't let slip away too long before we, before we act on it.
Okay. That doesn't remind me that certainly might want to program that for some time in May, if you're fortunate to get that information to you.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be like in the next two weeks or anything like that, you know, but I just, I just don't want to lose sight of it. You know, it might be that, that over the next few weeks, you know, we develop, you know, a list of communities to check in with and, you know, not that they have a lot of down moments, but the office staff could, you know, when they have 20 minutes, oh, I'm going to call this town, you know, and it might take them a couple, three weeks to get through the list, but, you know, we would be working, you know, making progress anyway.
I'm glad you raised the issue of about the office staff has an extra 20 minutes.
Yeah.
My observations are that we're going to continue to catch up on Wednesdays by closing.
Yeah.
It's an effective way to start that process. But we've got two employees who will be wanting to take some vacation, and that's going to be a problem sometime during the vacation period.
Yeah.
And despite what we have or don't have in our budget, there has to be someone else who would be trained going through. And I'd like to be able to put a advertisement out so that we could at least start getting applications for people who have that kind of interest and capability of working strictly part-time, except for those weeks where we have people on vacation and only one with them at a time.
Yeah.
And I think that's the only effective way to try to cover that. I know that in the last few days, it's like we were giving registrations away in terms of the numbers of processing applications they had to give for licensing and so on. And we still have to get taxes ready for many offices. Now, that's a whole nother issue, and I may not be here for that, but I'm going to plant the seed again. Collecting twice a year is a double-edged sword, but it's usually in favor of the taxpayer. We just have to pay it all at once, and it does mean we have to collect a little bit, but it affects your cash flow, and you don't necessarily borrow as much under tax, uh, tax anticipation though, and paying interest on something that we should have the taxpayers themselves pay directly, maybe twice a year. Some communities go four times a year, but that may not suit well, two times a year. And there's a reasonable transition for making that happen.
Yeah, um, yeah, I've actually looked at that in detail, and actually, I have a project planned on my computer for that.
Really?
Um, there, but I think it's, it's a year and a half process to do it.
Yes, to do it right.
Right. So, but I agree with you that eventually we need to get to that point, but there's a lot of discussion that we had before. And it's not going to happen this tax year.
No, it, it take, it, it has to be strategically planned out. What I've been accustomed to seeing is people go from a normal 12-month calendar year to a six-month fiscal year, and then it goes 12 months after that. And your ordinances have to be aligned with that. It, it does have that change, but in the long run, it's effective.
Yeah.
The last thing is, because we have two new members, and we have senior members who've been here, do you want me to set up some kind of workshop so that we can do orientation and reminders that would include FOA as well as all the other things? And if everything goes well, we're probably going to have to do it on an off night. It can't be a regular meeting night. You've got a month of May of potential interviews, so I'm scratching my head where to fit that in, but it's probably going to be a good hour and a half to two hours. It's public, it's open, but it helps you better understand or remind you of some of the things that may be coming on. And as you get into getting a new manager on board, you will be that much sharper and be able to keep up with that manager's training.
Yeah, and I know, and Joe, you've probably done this in the past, it can be on a planning board, but anybody who's newly elected is supposed to go to the main full site online and do the training, which, the training is, it's, it's tough to call it training. Basically, you're supposed to read the FAK document.
Yeah, I do.
And, and then.
Keep me awake.
And then, and then certify that you actually read it. And then, you know, and then you print out the certificate and give it to the town clerks and we keep it on file. So that, and then MMA has newly elected officials' trainings and workshops, which I highly recommend those. If you don't have an MMA login yet, more, then I would talk to Jessica about getting more, because there's a lot of really, really good information on the MMA website.
Once we get you enrolled, you'll also get the monthly magazine, and it's timely to topics.
Yep, yep.
I remember getting that before.
Yeah.
I went to a lot of their sessions up in, uh, at one place, a hotel up there.
Oh, the, their annual conference.
Yeah, their annual.
Yeah, I've been to that.
I signed up too, and.
I, I'm one who'd like to get in, give you a basic orientation, just enough so you stay ahead of the curve.
Yep, that's fine.
And once you continue that on your own, not keep you there for eight hours and stick your shins when your eyelids start getting heavy.
Yeah, right.
No, that, that's fine.
And, and a lot of it's good refresher for a lot of us to.
Yeah, it reminds me of things at times.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm done.
All right.
Moment.
Moving on then, public comment. So before I open it to the public, I want to, yesterday, uh, yesterday, last meeting, someone raised, asked questions that we weren't able to answer in that meeting because there's a lot of information related to a land use violation where the board basically settled at a lower amount civil penalty that was in the judgment. And people were asking why to do that. So there's very good reason for it, and it's not, you know, it's not always apparent, so I thought I would respond to that tonight. So in late February, I'm just, I'm not going to use a name because it's a secret, but the violator came to the select board, was basically looking for a reduction in the civil penalty for the land use violations. And at that time, we told violator that we're not even going to consider a change or any discussion of a change until we knew that all of the corrective actions that were called for in the judgment had happened. So we sent Calvin and George out. They went out the next day, walked the property, and they found that he was like 90% of the way there. And then about a month later, they walked it again, and we were informed that he had met all the conditions, all the corrective action conditions that were in the district court judgment. That night, because that happened to be the same day as a meeting we had in March, that night, a person came and in executive session, we had a discussion of, of the circumstances and the request for a reduction of civil penalty. The original penalty was $50,000, and, but one thing that's important to realize is the reason that penalty was $50,000, because that's what we had asked for. So in September, there was a public hearing that this gentleman failed to appear for, so there was a default judgment entered at that time. And after that, the judge basically asked the town, what do you, what are you seeking for a civil penalty? We used $100 a day from the date of the violation started to the date of the September court date. It came up to like $50,500, so we rounded it to $50,000. And so that's what the judge put in the judgment that was issued in November, okay? Then, so that's what was communicated to this person. They, so they were looking at the $50,000 fine. Let me use my place on the sequence here. So in asking for, when we were talking with this person, and we, I think we kind of knew this, there was some, one of the reasons we were amenable to a reduction was that there was, there was reasonable chance that some of the delay in him taking the corrective actions was a result of less than ideal communication from the previous code enforcement officer. If you recall at the time, one of the issues with this gentleman's property was that the foundation that he had put in without a permit, that's a separate issue, was eight, one corner, it was eight feet over the setback line, which in Durham is 100 feet from the street.
Right.
The state limit is 75 feet, and so he thought that was the limit he should be working with. But at the time, there was talk of an ordinance change in Durham to potentially bring our 100-foot setback to 75 feet, so it would be the same as the state. That didn't happen, but during the course of that, he had been advised by the previous code enforcement officer, well, you should probably just wait and see if that ordinance change goes through, because if it does, you're not violating the setback agreement. So that kind of dragged on, was a factor in the delay, so that led to part of the consideration of, of the reduction. The other piece that is not completely obvious is that it's, it's largely a legal strategy. So, and this is on the advice of the town attorney. So we haven't had a lot of these, but in fact, I think we've had one or two. When we're in litigation on a land use issue, the, when we're going, when there's potential for a judgment, we want that judgment to be a high number. And that for, for a couple of reasons. One, it's motivating to the violator to, you know, get it taken care of, because the judgment is typically a big number, plus another condition will have the big number, and then if they first just walk away and don't do anything, you have a judgment on, you know, on file with the court from a judge that then gives the town the power to like, you know, lean or attach property or whatever we need to do to like recover. The idea is that you have the big judgment, and if the person or the violator is then like cooperative and, you know, after that point, and I'm standing, they weren't that cooperative up to that point, because otherwise we wouldn't have been in court in the first place. But if after the judge is cooperative, they take care of the issues, if it happens, then there's often times consideration to reduce the penalty. The original, if, if this gentleman had gone, had gone to court originally in September, he was probably looking at a maximum fine of $7,500, which, there were three violations noted in the judgment, each would have been a maximum of $2,500. But because he didn't show, then that's where the civil penalty came in. So the amount of money he ended up paying, $25,000 plus legal fees, is more than three times what his fine would have been if it, if this had gone the normal course. And he was cooperative and took care of the issues, you know, once, once the final judgment and final decision was made. And $25,000 was actually, was the amount his attorney had proposed as a, as a compromise or settlement or whatever. So that's, that was where we landed. So in the end, violations were corrected, the town recovered its legal fees, and violator paid a significant fine. So that's, that's the, that's the story, if you will, for why we reduced the fine. Again, we, we didn't, the $50,000 was not a number that some judge came up with and said, this is the reasonable and appropriate amount. The $50,000 is the number we came up with. And so when adjusting that, we adjusted our own number. We weren't like overruling a judge, as I heard somebody say. That wasn't how it happened at all. So, so anyway, that is the, that is the explanation in response to the questions that we got in our last meeting. All right, so now, sorry.
Real question, is that fee, like, so maybe it would be like an RP schedule, like for, or is it a per case basis?
No, it's a per case basis. The law prescribes certain ranges of what the fines can be. But in some ordinances will prescribe certain fines, and we may have some, I don't know.
Or some.
But fees and fines are very.
Yeah, very different. I, I'm familiar with a lot of late region stuff, which is more severe, but it's your department, pretty heavily, so things like top and trees.
So, and so the. So, and so the, and part of it, you know, when we made a motion, you know, part of it was when we agreed to the reduction, you know, he basically, he had thirty days to pay, or else the origin, we reverted to the original terms, which was fifty thousand dollars plus an additional hundred dollars a day for each additional day that it wasn't taken care of. So, he paid us, um, we, the town has collected the money.
And deposited.
And deposited.
Even that, yeah, cleared.
Can we use that for fuel?
You could, if you had a warrant, I would prefer.
Yeah, right, no, I know, I know, I'm just kidding, so. Alright, so I will open it up. Are you here for public comment?
Yes, yes, sure.
Alright, I, I've been involved
Yeah, sit, sit right up at the table though, because you gotta be uh, on, on Get, well, have a seat, introduce yourself and little Mike will pick you up and all that.
Alright. Well, hello, I just wanted to stop by and introduce myself, I'm Eric Reiki. Um, not a resident of Durham, but I'm wanting to represent Durham in the Maine State Senate. And um, with redistricting, I, I, I served in the Maine State Senate representing Auburn, New Gloucester, Poland, Minnet, Mechanic Falls, but after, uh, for, for two terms. But with redistricting, Durham has returned to the district. Sadly, I've lost Minnet, Mechanic Falls, there are good people, I'll miss them. I'm looking forward to getting to know all the people of Durham as I go out and knock doors and talk with voters. So I just thought, uh, I had never been to a, I've never represented Durham before, I've never been to a Durham select board meeting. I figured I should come, sit in seats and just say hello and meet you all.
Great, well, nice to have you here. So, well, is the whole town of Durham in, in that senate district, or are we split?
All of Durham, in the
Okay, Eric, because we've been split in the past.
Yeah, yeah, and it, with um, I think splits generally happen more in house seats than in senate seats. Um, so I think that uh, the only real split town I can think of as far as senate seats goes is Portland, because they're too big to honestly. I will note that it is uh with this redistricting, we're actually going back to the way the district was uh back when Lois Snowmello was the
Yeah, I remember Lois.
Oh yeah, she was a great mentor to me.
Yep.
Rest her soul.
Great, well, thank you, uh, thank you for being here, appreciate it, and um
Cool, pleasures on mine, and I will say, um, if at any point, uh, I, I, I'm certain as things go on, I'd love to get, get the, reach out to you individually and hear any thoughts you have about anything's going on in Augusta. But if at any point, as far as kinda interests of the town of Durham go, uh, if there's anything that Augusta is doing screwy that I, that you'd like to bend my ear on, or uh, or just give me
Shut up now.
Jeez, I'll have to cut that shit off my notebook.
Be careful what you ask for.
But if you'd like, I can leave, um, I can leave my contact information, uh, and welcome hearing from any of you. And I'm sure I'll probably be out knocking on your door sometime in the near future, so.
Great, just, you know, I would advise you, have somebody post on all things Durham, they're gonna do that, or on somebody like, there's some weird guy driving around knocking on doors, anybody know who this guy is?
So I usually try to put like a car magnet on, so people don't think I'm like
That's a good idea.
I don't do like a, an ugly jean or something like that, so.
Yeah, alright, alright, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good to meet you. Take care.
Uh, down the church, old country road. I'll get ahold of him, let's see. The most important thing is the renovation of the town hall. I went to the public works building, I walk up. I honestly think this addict could go down with the code enforcement officer. He works a lot with the road commissioner anyway, because they have to decide on driveways and this and that when they're getting some of the stuff done from codes. I think it's a logical, as far as computers and stuff go. I have my, the store, when I had the store, I was able to work on the computer all the time from home, and it was just as fast. And the computer company, anytime I had any problems, they jumped right online and fixed it. Right now, I do the bookwork for three other companies from my house. Uh, the computer company, when I call them up, have problems, he jumps right on, fixes it all, that's where I come from there. I am able to get into anybody's computer, work right on it and do it, if they give me permission. So, um, I'm fine with wifi, it's, it's fast, I don't have any problem with it. I know this is totally different, but I know the store had a lot of, a lot of stuff and a lot of different programs on it, and I was able to get into everything. The other thing is using your review center, okay? A lot of people, now a few people donated their time, work, effort, energy, volunteered, busted butt on that, to have it for a public place so they could do plant sales, cups of, whatever they wanted to do for the town, for the public, a place for the public. I really feel, if you go put the code enforcement officer in there and then it's gonna be locked up more, they can't go in and out of it at night. You're having meetings and it works, because you don't have any records and public stuff to really look at, and people can go in and out. But I think it's gonna take away, my opinion is it's gonna take away from the use of some of these people, blood, sweat and tears really are hard to renovate this place for them, to have it for all the public to use, not narrow it down for this, and to have a code enforcement officer or somebody have to be in there. They're gonna have records in there, it's gonna be locked up, they know, peace and quiet, they're gonna do, just my opinion.
Yeah, we're not, just, we're not talking about putting the code enforcement officer over there.
Okay, well
Just to put your mind at ease of that.
Oh, alright.
We're talking about maybe having our, like, this meeting here, holding that meeting over there.
Oh, okay.
But the, the offices would still be over here.
Okay, well, alright, then if we can change the office and put him down in public works, that would be wonderful. But that's, like I said, my opinion. The other thing is, I've heard a lot of uh people, not a lot, probably eight, nine of us, all kinda talking about, you know, we'd volunteer down here to stuff envelopes, um, if they're doing, like, they, they put out three hundred mailers and stuff. We could have come in here and just take the mailers and stuff, I mean, do it, there's a lot of volunteers that would gladly help. So if there was a way to maybe um, for the girls to have a sheet or have something that, or put on the town of Durham site, who was willing to volunteer all sorts of times to do. And then say, you know, we've got a lot of envelopes this day, who would come in? I work with the committee now, and we had over eight hundred things to stuff. And she just put out there, who's willing to volunteer, and sixteen of us showed up, and we were able to get done in a couple of hours, and done, out, gone. And it was under her liking. So that's kind of, um, it, it's just an idea that maybe the people are here, some of the stuff is here, and I know sometimes it's hard to see the forest through the trees and stuff, but there, there's people willing to help and, and also do it for nothing, help the taxpayers maybe. And I think that covers that, so, yeah, I was really
Great, thank you very much.
Really, thank you.
Thanks. I like the volunteer call sheet, if there's tasks. I mean, obviously, I got a lot of volunteers who want to do the trio system, but, you know, but there, there's probably stuff that, that might make sense.
As a matter of fact, that's exactly what we did prior to the annual town meeting that you had. That Thursday and Friday, we had volunteers in here, people who'd come in like yourself, and they actually, we had to go through a whole lot of assembly to get the annual report ready for you for Saturday, and they did a great job. I totally agree with that. I totally agree with the chair's assessment, but that's the best place to use volunteers.
Alright, next on the agenda, I need to see anybody else here for public comment, so we'll close public comment. Uh, item six on the agenda is discussion of the town manager search and the committee review process. So I think I said earlier, the plan, um, we've kinda talked about the economy, how many people we have, we're gonna rush, we don't have any interviews tonight, we have the staff members. And we'll uh interview citizens interested on Thursday, starting at six thirty, we'll be here at six thirty. I think the interviews actually start at six forty-five.
Yes.
We, so the plan, we come out of executive session, um, the motion uh won't be to adjourn, it will be to recess and reconvene on Thursday, so that we're still operating under the same meeting notice as tonight. So just to give everybody a heads up, while we're not in executive session, how that process is gonna work. And then, uh, so that, we'll take a quick look at the applications tonight, so we have a meeting coming on Thursday, and uh, we'll uh, do our first few interviews, and then after the interview Thursday, the idea is that the board will continue to meet, select the three citizens, um, and uh, the three board members that would be on the committee and uh come out of that session. Would we actually announce the, those chosen, or how do you wanna communicate that? We kinda have to, right, because that'll be in the motion.
That's correct.
Right.
And the fact that you're treating the applications as confidential is only to the point that you're having discussion and figuring out which one. Once you've made your decision, the offer to be appointed is made public.
Yeah, yeah.
In your motion.
Yeah.
If someone should back out, then it'd be up to you to, to decide if there's someone else to take their place.
And actually, you know what, that's a good point, we should, when we pick the committee, we should pick a couple of like, okay, if, like, here's alternate one and alternate two.
Yeah.
If one of the three we pick isn't available for some reason, or changes their mind, or whatever. You'd think so, but you know, unforeseen things happen, right? You know, they could have a family issue, or, I mean, who knows?
Something come up, yeah.
I was also, something that crossed my mind the other day was um, if uh, one of the, one of the folks on the committee knows why they have to act like this.
I mean, we probably all know all.
We might know all, yeah, we do, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, but what if, what if one of the board members is married, or they have Because we do have that situation, we want to talk, we want to talk about that. I think, I think it's a judgment call.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't think there's any hard, fast rule against it, I think it's a judgment.
Disclosure is important.
Yeah.
The fact that the committee is merely doing the first run assessment into three categories, and then it's up to you to decide based on your interviews where you want to go.
Well, the committee doesn't
Once you've got your committee, and going forward, the disclosure still carries.
Right.
And if that disclosure affects myself as a committee member, and my wife is an applicant to be a town manager, then I have to
Oh, no, no, we don't have that situation.
No.
We have, one of the citizen committee applicants is the wife of one of the board members. That's, that's what would happen. But
I'm using myself as an example of this case.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the, the conflict would be in the initial selection and appointment. And then at that point, you've made your decision. If, in fact, it was reversed, and it was your wife who was an applicant for the town manager position, you'd have to disclose and recuse.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would definitely
It'd be completely different.
Yeah, so, um, anyway, so we'll talk about that.
Yep, that's fine.
And the, the committee, just to clarify, the committee, the nine, the, the three citizens and you do the initial yes, no, maybe, and then the full nine-person committee and you does the first round interviews, gets it down to, you know, three to a maximum of five finalists, and then those are the people that then go and interview with the full board. So just to kinda reiterate, for anybody watching, what that process looks like, so.
And I know that's hard for the public to sometimes follow, so I'll repeat myself. Because all of this is personnel matters, and secondly, under the FOIA statute, it's part of what they call appointments.
Yep.
Even when they're done, they can't talk about it, because the applicant has an expectation of confidentiality in, in our files.
Yep. Okay, so was there anything else? And you kinda briefed us already that we had two applications so far, the Amity Heights, Minn. So hopefully we'll stop seeing some, some response to pick up here.
Did anyone see it in the Sunday paper, the Portland Press Herald, or the Boston Sun Journal?
I, no, but I wouldn't, because I don't, I don't read, I read, I read both of the, I don't know, actually, I don't read the Portland Press, you know, but the Sun Journal, I read it online, I, I have a digital.
Should be in the one that's set.
Yeah, I'd have to go look for it. Yeah. Okay, um, okay, I have seven. Basically, uh, we have a um, Board of Appeals reservation, um, so the uh, reservation is Barb Schneider. She is a really sharp woman, can serve the, serve the appeal board really well. Sorry to see her go. So, uh, no action to take on this tonight, but we'll, what? Oh, I thought it was Barb Schneider. Did I read the letter?
It's the way he wrote the letter.
So it's not Barb? Sorry, Barb.
He's addressing Barb, because she's the chair.
I read that too fast. Okay, good, I'm a lot of our school. So Dean Clark is stepping down, okay.
Can we edit that tape?
Can we do tape two? Okay, so, um Okay, I said, I don't know Dean as well, but we, we certainly appreciate um his service, so we will, there are, I think there are two alternates to the Board of Appeals right now, so we'll have to, uh, it's up to, it's up to the board to determine which alternate would be elevated to a, um, you know, full voting member. I guess probably, uh, first step was probably to reach out to the two alternates and see if they're interested in that, if they want that. And if they both are, um, then, um, then the board would discuss that. And we, it, depending on how well they get on, we could, for instance, bring them in for um, just a little meet and greet interview, just to know who they are, and kinda what they're thinking, why they wanna be a full voting member, or whatever. Or we, if we know the people, we're comfortable, you know, we can just, you know, make the call. That would be an executive session discussion, because it's just, it's just like filling a, a job, really, and all, any appointment like that, so. No, but no action to take tonight on that.
Would you like me then to make contact with both of those individuals?
Yes, please, sorry, yeah, so, um, I guess that would be the action, is to um, reach out to the two alternates, let them know that there's been a resignation, ask if they're interested in potentially being elevated to, you know, regular voting member, um, and uh, go from there.
You know, uh, so, go ahead. No, I was gonna say, isn't, I, I'm just thinking back to planning one of these, I thought that was the planning of chairs.
Select, select board. Select board appoints, um, appoints, I think the members and the regular members, so. I think if the, if the Board of Appeals wants to make a recommendation, it's worth considering. But it's not, I think, like, what it's, what it's not is an automatic, like It, it's not, yeah, it's not like, okay, who is an alternate, or, okay, they're the next one to move up, it's not, it's not like that. Okay, um Yeah, I mean, so, we'll have to find another alternate, and we actually, we don't really have, there's no, not urgencies, but we actually have a vacant um budget committee seat that we need to appoint somebody to fill to finish out Lois Kowalczek's term. Because her, because her resignation was effective after the town meeting and annual election, it falls to the select board to appoint somebody to So at some point, and again, this isn't urgent, because there'd be a lot of, for a budget committee, so I don't even think The uh, although if we ever go to a special town meeting where they request for more money for public works, then they have to, they would have to do a recommendation on that, so. Anyway, so we, yeah, we'll have that to attend to. So at some point, we'll need to put out the word, if, if anybody's interested in being on a budget committee for a year to finish out a term, that they can probably do a similar thing like we did for applications for the committee who's interested.
Is it standard practice customary for the chair of the select board then to send a thank you for your service letter?
It hasn't been, but I think that's a nice idea. So you're talking about to Dean Clark? Yeah, so if, if, um, if a letter could be drafted, um, that would be, I think that's a nice, a very nice touch.
Yeah, don't send to the other.
Yeah, yeah, right. Sorry, y'all. And I, um Yeah, so, okay. Alright, I would entertain a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Two of Todd News, for a second. Joe Seconds, all in favor? Okay, has, uh, upcoming meetings. So the possible town manager hiring committee meetings, week of May ninth, that's very tentative at this point, but just to put it, put it out there. And then, I don't, I don't have the date for our next select board meetings here, but it's the second and fourth And then, I don't, I don't have the date for our next select board meetings here, but it's the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, so. Okay, all right. At this point, we don't, we do have.
I don't think the planners. Has the planner left, but still at the planning board meeting? Is this light on?
I don't think he's.
Mr. Jordan?
I'm not sure we're going to have him today. But we can talk about, he briefed me before the meeting on what.
It's an enforcement issue that we need to take up in executive session.
Yeah, yeah, but he briefed me on it before he went over to the. Okay, so I'm going to move us into executive session.